Any good position?
Yeah. Alright, so the time is six oh one and I call the January fourteenth Board of Selective Team order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Collins, we have a moment in the room. So we have approval of the minutes and the last meeting was on December tenth, twenty twenty four, and they're attached.
We approve.
So, um, motion's been made to approve the minutes. Did you have any comments or anything on that?
No.
So, all in favor? Aye. Um, we're ministering. And now we go on to our addition to the agenda. Oh, we did have another addition to the agenda, just to add, um, uh, we have a resolution. But we'll add to the end of your presentation. And then we'll move on, uh, to that, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so that's fine, and then we're gonna go on to our presentation, um, from our orders, uh, King, King and Associate, and Sean is here for that. You all shall not be in the audit in front of anyone too.
You do.
Alright, bye here.
Hey, how you guys doing? Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let me see if I can share. Is there any way to access sharing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I just put together, uh, PowerPoint to go through, uh, just some of the highlights from the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Uh, and then, do you guys have a bound copy?
Yeah.
Cause it'll reference some page numbers and then it'd be easier if you have a copy to refer to.
We do.
Okay. Uh, so, the, so you have the annual financial statement audit, and then you also had Connecticut Single Audit, which is your grant compliance audit. Uh, you also have a Board of Education, EFS, AUP. Uh, we're still working with the Board of Ed to finish the AUP portion of this, uh, but your main audit and the single audit are complete and filed with the state. Uh, we'll start on page thirteen, which is your governmental funds balance sheet. Uh, so on page thirteen, uh, your general fund unassigned fund balance at the end of the year was, uh, one million three hundred fifty two thousand thirty-six. Uh, your fund balance policy, which you'll see later in the audit on page twenty-four, uh, you guys aim to keep the general fund unassigned balance between eight and twelve percent of the operating general fund expenditures. Uh, your unassigned general fund fund balance as a percent of the general fund operating expenditures for the year was fourteen point one percent. So you're a little bit higher than your range, but, uh, I guess it's better to have more fund balance than less fund balance. Uh, also on page thirteen, so in the assigned column, uh, in the general fund column, you could see, uh, you have four hundred and ten thousand, which you assign to be used to balance your fiscal twenty-five budget. Uh, so you're attempting to use some fund balance to get back within your range. Uh, going to page fifteen, so this is the revenues expenditures, changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. Uh, your general fund for the year had a decrease in fund balance of forty thousand two thirty-four. Uh, that's much less than the anticipated use for the year, which was three hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, we'll see that later when we get to the detailed budget schedule. Uh, during the year, you also, uh, down at the bottom of this page, in the general fund column, you can see sale of capital assets, uh, forty thousand, so that was your two church street property that was sold during the year. Uh, going to page seventeen, so this is your, um, budgetary schedule. Uh, you can see on a budgetary basis down in the bottom right corner, uh, net change in fund balance of a decrease of twenty-four thousand. Uh, a little bit higher, you can see the appropriation of fund balance for three hundred and eighty thousand, so that was the amount you were expecting to decrease your fund balance by. Uh, however, due to greater than expected revenues of about three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, you only decreased your fund balance by about twenty-five thousand. Uh, and we'll see the detailed budget in a little bit. Uh, going to page twenty-five. So on page twenty-five, so there's a, at the bottom of this page, there's a reconciliation that gets you from the GAAP basis financial statements, uh, which were on page fifteen that we just looked at, to the budget basis financial statements, which were on page seventeen. Uh, so in the chart, you can see total revenues, uh, differences to get from budget basis to GAAP basis, which is your on behalf, uh, TRB contributions that the state makes for the teachers. The gain on the sale of capital assets, it's reclassed out of revenues down to other financing sources. Uh, and then the issuance of leases shows up as an expenditure in another financing source for GAAP basis. Uh, so I put together a three-year general fund fund balance chart. Uh, people just like to see how their fund balances trending over time. Uh, over the last three years, yours has slightly decreased a little bit. And, uh, I'll email this PowerPoint, uh, over to you guys after the meeting. Going to pages thirty and thirty-one. So this is your long-term liability note. Uh, you can see during the year, you paid down fifty-two thousand, uh, towards your equipment financing notes. Uh, the notes are to purchase two plow trucks. Uh, at year end, you still had three hundred and twenty thousand remaining on those two notes. Uh, annual debt maturity or debt service requirements, uh, to maturity for the next six years is about seventy thousand a year. Uh, and you can see that towards the bottom of page thirty in the, um, chart. And on page thirty-one, so there's a leases payable note. Uh, that during the year, the town issued two new copier leases, uh, at Town Hall. So you can see the, um, debt maturity, they call it, for the copier leases in the chart below that, about twenty-six thousand a year, and this also includes Board of Ed copiers.
Copy.
There you, yeah. On the paperwork.
Uh, going to page thirty-two. Uh, so note eight, these are your fund balance components. So this chart breaks down, uh, what the fund balances are made up of from page thirteen, which is a more summarized version up towards the front. Uh, on the left column, the general fund, you can see that you have four hundred and ten thousand assigned to the subsequent budget. Uh, going to page thirty-four. So this is the teacher's retirement system pension note. Uh, at June thirty, twenty twenty-four, there was about eight point two million of teachers' uh, pension liability that associated with Volantown. Uh, you're currently not responsible for any of it, it's handled at the state. Uh, this is just, um, what your portion would be. Uh, during the year, the on behalf amount that the state kicked in for you guys was about seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. Uh, going to page thirty-nine. Similar to the TRB note, this is the TRB OPEB, so the other post-employment benefits for the teachers. Uh, the liability associated with the town is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, currently not responsible for any of it, and the on behalf amount of the OPEB contribution that was contributed by the state was ten thousand four hundred and two. Uh, going to page forty. Uh, so these are the upcoming Gatsby pronouncements, uh, and their effective dates. Uh, so you have Gatsby's one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four coming up. Uh, one oh one will impact the town of Volantown. Uh, you'll have to change how you calculate your compensated absences at the town and the Board of Ed for reporting at year end. And then, so that's gonna be for next year. And then for Gatsby one oh three, financial reporting model improvements, uh, this is gonna be effective for your fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and it'll have some slight impact on you. Uh, you'll have to put some more, um, detail behind the budgetary schedules, and the budget will have to be presented as required supplementary information as opposed to up in the front of the audit. Uh, going to pages forty-three through forty-nine, so this is your detailed budgetary schedule. Uh, so we'll just touch on some of the big, uh, gains or losses compared to budget. Uh, so during the year, your tax collections came in a hundred and thirty-two thousand greater than anticipated. You received, um, municipal revenue sharing grant of about sixty-five thousand that you had in budget for. The permits came in about fifty-five thousand greater than you had expected. And those differences had, are most of what offsets your anticipated use of the three hundred and eighty thousand, uh, bringing you down to only using up about twenty-five thousand of your fund balance. Uh, going to page fifty-two. Uh, so this is the tax collectors' report, shows the outstanding taxes receivable by grand list year. Uh, your outstanding tax receivable balance at June thirty, twenty twenty-four was a hundred seventy-four thousand six thirty-four. Uh, we usually compare that to the current levy as a percentage, uh, so yours is two point six five percent of the current levy, uh, and we normally see that ratio between two and six percent, so you're at the good end of the ratio. Uh, so the next thing I would go to is the single audit in the smaller package, unless there's any questions on the, this main one.
Hang on, let me get a copy of that. Do you have any questions on that, anyone?
You.
No question.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on anyone? There you go. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, going to page six in the small package. So these are your state expenditures, uh, for twenty twenty-four. Uh, total state expenditures or state grant expenditures was about three point three six million. Uh, two point two million of that was the education cost sharing and the excess cost grants. A hundred seventy-three K is Townide Road. Uh, three hundred and thirty-three thousand was your tiered pilot grant. Uh, two hundred and twelve thousand was related to early care and education, and then you also had an additional two hundred and sixteen thousand of steep funding. And then going to pages eight and nine. So this is the schedule of findings and question costs. Uh, the major programs selected for the state single audit this year was the tiered pilot program and the early care and education program at the Board of Ed. Uh, and then, if you look at the chart, you can see in internal control over financial reporting, so there was no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies identified. Uh, no non-compliance material to financial statements noted. And then for internal control over major programs, again, no material weaknesses identified and no significant deficiencies identified. Uh, so last year, we had a, uh, management letter recommendation to, um, develop the accounting policy and procedure manual for your finance office. Uh, so we just were updating on the, the comment from last year, so yes, the town has designed one, uh, and you do now have one, it looks like it was, uh, completed in September, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And then, does anybody have any questions?
I'm good. We're good, thank you.
Tomorrow.
Has anybody ever had a lot of questions on the audit?
Uh, no, not really.
A lot of numbers.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot all at once, so.
Yeah, unless there's something bad, but it's all, it doesn't seem anything bad, so, yeah. We're good, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll close my view.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Bye. Um, we have finance director in court, uh, yeah. Yeah, both Tony and I don't have one, we're gonna get a long meeting. That'll sign with the audit report, that was fine. Um, court and final announcement. Don't worry, baby. Alright, so, there's a bunch of courts. It's the time of year where we get budget requests from nonprofits, um, to keep in mind when we work on the budget later. So these will all be, um, kept in line for that. Um, I got a request from the Homeland Hospitality Center, serving southeastern Connecticut. Um, they're located in New London. Um, they are requesting five hundred dollars. And they didn't really send any detailed information as to how many people in Volantown actually have been there. Um, so.
I think we probably have.
Five hundred dollars. Um, we got a request from the Sexual Assault Crisis Center of Eastern Connecticut. Um, they did send out a report, uh, they've served, um, services to seven residents of Volantown, and they are requesting five hundred dollars. So, they helped seven people and they estimate the cost at one thousand four hundred per person. In the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, um, they're requesting for a hundred dollars. I believe that's the one that's in the budget now that we give, I believe. Yeah. Safe Futures, um, they're requesting four hundred dollars. Yeah. I was, uh, they helped thirty-two people in Volantown.
What, doing what?
Um, they do during the twenty-three, twenty-four program year, they, you sure, served more than ten thousand women, children, and men who needed our help. Um, domestic violence, and rights intervention. But it helped thirty-two people and they're requesting four hundred dollars. UCF Health Care, um, they have serviced three hundred and eight unduplicated Volantown residents.
How many eight?
Three hundred and eight.
Three hundred and eight.
Yeah. And it's a forty-five percent increase from last year where they serviced two hundred and twelve residents.
And what is it, services that they provide?
They provide, um, sixty dental visits to thirty-two Volantown residents at a cost of twenty-six thousand dollars. Five hundred and eighty-eight primary care medical visits to two hundred and six Volantown residents at a cost of one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Twenty-nine women's health visits to twenty-one Volantown residents at a cost of five thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Nine hundred and sixty-four behavioral health visits to forty-eight Volantown residents for a cost of one thousand five hundred and one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, okay, I read that one.
He's twenty visits per, per person.
Yeah, it's probably like for a couple of months, like month to month, I believe, or something, you know?
And this is, you know, community, community family service.
Yeah, and they've had one Ross Adult Daycare Center's visit to one Volantown, from one Volantown resident at a hundred and twenty dollars. They are requesting thirty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Wow, um, how much have they requested in years past?
I, I don't remember seeing anything that detailed before, so I don't know. But they said there were two hundred and twelve people last year, so it was probably more like a twenty. Maybe I kind of remember twenty grand.
We gave them twenty grand.
I don't know if we did, I don't think we did. I think we have that in our budget. Yeah, we have it there somewhere. Eastern Connecticut Conservation, I believe, right now is the old one. Uh, TVCCA Services. TVCCA, we do. Yeah, TVCCA, it helps a hundred and thirteen people. Uh, I refer people to them a lot for feeding assistance and, um, they do our meals on wheels, so they actually, we, we use them a lot. They're requesting eight hundred and thirty-eight, so.
That's a lot more for one thirty-two thousand.
And we give them to contribute like for, they're, they're asking for a little bit of anything, which I think is fine because they do help a lot of people. I'm not like, I'm not like the other agencies, don't help a lot of people, but I actually, I find people. And the last is an update from MECOG. Um, but this one doesn't have a date on it, but I think they may be in December. Um, how many number of cases, they have one open case, zero closed cases, zero impounded, zero adopted, and zero utilized from Volantown. That's the MECOG and more control report, and that's all I have for part one.
Nobody writes me.
No one writes you letters. So I don't do it well, for your reasons. Um, probably work report. Um, I don't think I've had anything really, besides they've been working on, um, storm playing the like ice, the rose for ice and snow. They've been working other things too, but, um, local traffic authority, I don't have anything.
When are we going to have our first chance to find out what part? You need any speed detector, you know, tell people are traveling roads.
Oh, I have, I can print reports anytime, so anytime you want to know, just come by and I'll, I'll show you. I'm not, I gotta check on it because I don't know if they're working on their right times they're supposed to be working. When I look into the database, they're, they're scheduled correctly, but I don't know, I don't know if they're connecting. And, um, I asked the school, um, bus transportation manager, can we put a, um, alert app to the bus drivers for me to let me know if they were working or not, because they were the only ones that are like up in the mornings and seeing it.
Yeah.
So, happy new year.
Object, whatever's going on. You're in the right place.
So, um, I'm keeping an eye on it and waiting to see, um, if I have to call the service area to find out, um, why they're not syncing with my, my, my schedule. Um, old business, ARPA funds, I don't know. Just, uh, they're only just waiting on the, um, the radio. The radios, and then our, our thoughts are done. So, the last, the last payment for the Volantown fire. Yeah, so the radio, um, I just got an update. Uh, they've been delivered to the fire department and he's hoping to have them, people here to install them, I think by the end of the month, or a couple of weeks, he just responded to me like a week ago, so probably then, probably installing. Um, and the trip grant, I don't think we had any changes on that, and the water study, we have a meeting tomorrow, and I think early noon. Uh, new business resignation. Yeah.
What's resignations?
We have a resignation from the Inland Wetlands Waterport Commission for, um, Tammy Diagnall, um, she's on new, worked our motors and, um, she's resigned from, you know? And I have Andrew Tebene, who is resigning from the board trust.
Library.
Of the library, yeah, the library. Those need a motion to
To accept the resignations.
And a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we'll accept one with regret and thanks for holding those positions when needed and volunteering.
Okay.
And then we have some letters for appointment. I have so I have Carl Greer, who wants to be appointed to, um, Inland Wetlands Commission and the zoning board of appeals. Um, I spoke design, I spoke to Inland Wetlands Commission. Um, Carl actually has some wetland violations right now, so, um, it's kind of contradictory to appoint someone
Sure.
that has
Issues.
issues already to the board. So I would think that, uh, that would, uh, know that, and he has to be appointed to the zoning board of appeals, but I have, we have one vacancy there, and I have another person that applied as well, um, Al Diagnall. Um, Al has, um, he's a business owner in town and does contracting, so he's for zoning, for the zoning board of appeals, he has a background there too, so I would recommend Al for that position.
I defer your recommendation.
So, we have Al to fill the vacancy of what did I say? Zoning board of appeals, do you want to do these all together or separately?
All together.
Okay, so I have, um, Al Diagnall for, um, I would recommend for the zoning board of appeals.
Yep.
I have, um, Dana Stenager, um, she would like to be appointed to the elderly commission. We have, where we have, um, we have, we have one vacancy there, so she would fill that vacancy. Um, she works as an occupational therapist, so, um, she does home healthcare, so I think she would fit in with the elderly commission. And then we have Kim Alexander, who would like to be, um, appointed to the Memorial Day Commission. Okay.
Memorial parade committee?
Yeah, but they have the Memorial Day Committee, yeah, that is a parade. He's a USMC and Army National Guard veteran, so he has no more skills or abilities.
More importantly, he's willing to do it.
Yeah, and he's willing to volunteer.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Good thing I wrote them. I'm going to be putting Al Diagnol to zoning board of appeals, Dana Steniger to the elderly commission, and Tim Alexander to the memorial day committee.
Any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor? Okay, they're all appointed, and thanks so much for volunteering, helping out. Okay, okay. All right, so next we have. Appointment, parking ordinance. So. This. If you can read it or. Parking ordinance, the scope, I haven't been to the attorney yet, this is just to put it together. The board of selectmen of the town of Volontown at the local traffic authority hereby establishes the following regulations. Restricting parking of vehicles on all roads, maintaining by the town definition. Interference with traffic flow or snow removal work, no vehicle shall be parked at any time in such a manner as interfere with the normal flow of traffic or with snow flying work or snow removal work. For winter parking, no parking shall be permitted on any time between the hours of eleven PM and six AM, commencing November first of each year and ending on April thirtieth of each year. That just helps, a lot of the snowstorms happen during the night, and if the guys are out plowing at two o'clock in the morning, people are parked in the road. It causes safety issues and with the plowing.
Just like they honestly. And if they do park in the road.
Um, it's on the penalty.
Oh, no.
So, parking prohibited during parking bans for snow removal. The first selectman or his or her designated name may enforce the parking ban during and or in anticipation of a winter weather event or on any public streets or highways moving in the town. As deemed necessary and his or her sole expression, any such parking bans must be announced on the town website and social media. No automobile, truck, vehicle, or any personal property of any kind or description shall be parked, placed, deposited, or left or allowed to remain within the limits of any public street in the town during the duration of such parking. And penalty, any person, firm, or corporation violating these provisions shall be fined not more than one hundred dollars by the board of selectmen for each violation. The town acting through its first election or their good name may remove or cause to be removed from the street within the town, any automobile, truck, vehicle, or any personal property, placed, deposited, or left or allowed to remain on any street within the town in violation. Of provisions of the section to a garage or other place of storage where the same shall be kept until repossessed by the owner. Or other person entitled to the possession thereof or otherwise disposed of, the town is not responsible for any damage done or removal and storage of such property. The owner or other person entitled to possession thereof may reclaim the property upon payment of long expenses and the cost of removal in support. And that part doesn't just include vehicles, but there's instances of like.
Trailers.
Yeah, trailers or basketball things that are left in the road. Something like that. I haven't gone to the attorney yet, but this is just for our first draft before we go over to the.
Just so you're clear, honestly, if you can find people a hundred dollars a day, we don't even have, can't we find them?
I don't know. I don't know if we can find them a hundred dollars a day for this, I haven't gone to the attorney yet, they'll probably tell us we can, but it's, it's in there, so. It hasn't gone there yet, so that's the other thing, is I don't know if like, if we're gonna be able to do that, because we don't have a finding authority. I was kind of thinking as the local traffic authority that might give us the authority to find, but I don't know if that's covered. So that's the, that's the only thing that I was wondering. And again, this has to go to the attorney, I did pull this, I'm a whole bunch of other town ordinances, but some of those towns have police officers and have the authority to write tickets. We don't, so I don't know if the fine is do or not. So that, that's what I have to find out.
Well, these sound good. They're all constables?
Yeah, we still could do constables, but those get tricky, so.
Well, you know, in the old days.
Unless they make me the constable.
In the old days, you know, the constables used to collect.
I should be able to write tickets, I have to go on the right, right ticket, I know, I don't know if I can write tickets.
Well, in the old days, the constables used to be able to write tickets and they collected a portion of the funds. The constables used to be able to write the ticket or apply, and they collected a portion of it, you know, just like serving papers.
Oh, right, oh, so that's how it got ruined, because I heard that they, there used to be constables in a lot of the towns, and a lot of the towns just stopped doing it because people were like. Yeah, they were, yeah. Going a little crazy with the ticket writing.
Oh, if you want to. Yeah, they don't leave a basketball hoop on the road, yeah, they definitely be pushing it, but. All right.
So, yeah, so I was going to be sorry, it doesn't, it doesn't know if anyone else wanted to add anything or take anything off or whatever, and like that. So we'll move back on to the ten, thirty, yeah. All right, employee handbook. So, at the last, they had our last meeting, the employee handbook had gone to the attorney. He had some recommendations for changes, they were made, and Julie went through it, it was some of the.
This was written by Randy Frank.
Yeah.
She was their original.
I remember.
So the changes were made, there was most, it was like typos and a couple of clarifications, and there was nothing big, so we have a final draft and. We're still working, in the meantime that we've been doing this, the state's new sick leave policies went into place, so we're still making up.
There might be, there might be a couple, like we're sick leave, but.
Yeah, there was a, there was a big meeting today that Julie was in about the changes, so we're gonna be talking to the labor attorney about that section, just to make sure that we're compliant with it, but other than that. We're ready to approve it. If we have a motion to approve it, or if we want to talk about it, then.
Do you want to do it tonight? I haven't read the phone copy. Can we wait for the next meeting?
You can, well, we still have to go through the.
We need to, well, we're.
While we were having a meeting.
We're trying to get this out to the employee person on the day of the twenty eighth, but I think.
By what day?
Day of the twenty eighth. The morning.
Whether or not we have another meeting, so if you want to do another meeting, we'll have to have a. When's the next meeting? Yes, we wanted to have it ready.
It's the thing, the clean draft, just he just finally don't play the numbers.
And it's not that much different than the draft, those corrections.
No, no, that's right, that's right.
Okay. Move to approve it.
So, any questions or anything on that? Okay, so all in favor?
And I did talk to Skip, and I told him to make sure he, he read it and looked through it before this meeting, and if he had any comments or concerns to send it to me, nine seconds.
So, all in favor of approving the updated employee handbook? Aye, aye. All right, that's great. All right, we have some tax refunds. Loretta LLC. For.
Three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Yeah. We have. The town of Volontown for six thousand four dollars and thirty-two cents, that is from the portfolio sale. ACAR leasing. Two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, the, I think we already signed checks for these, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Usually, don't approve them usually first, and then will we sign checks for them?
Well, we can pull the checks if we aren't approving them.
Always selling these last week.
Yeah, she hasn't been, she just wanted to go.
Okay, I just.
They haven't been sent yet, so it's ready.
Or we're just.
They haven't been sent yet, but it's to the town of Volontown, she needed it.
I understand, that was a bookkeeping entry for the year.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Like emotionally, we pay the tax refunds as a part of it.
Any discussion? Besides what you just said.
Besides what you said, yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, and request for pay, okay, so. The. Fire Department. Has concerns with their coverage on the weekends for emergency services. We have town. Town, where the day staff is considered town, town employee staff. We pay for coverage for weekdays, so that we're staffed for emergencies. We started because the volunteers all worked out of town, and it was so that we had coverage during the day. It's getting harder to get coverage on the weekends now too, so they are requesting that we add day coverage on Saturday and Sunday as well. I. That we would, we had looked at the cost of it, we have, we don't have it in the budget to start right away, but we would consider it for. Next budget. So. That's where.
We would increase this budget every, by thirty grand, which is a lot.
You would, yeah.
Without going, we would have to go to a town meeting if you want to.
Yeah. So, just on the radar that we have that coming up, and I can, we can, when we get closer to the budget time, we can have someone from the fire department come in and talk about it to them. That was for. Steve Grant, twenty twenty-five, so a new Steve Grant has come out. This one is for one million dollars, so we're meeting tomorrow, we'll be talking to John the planner about where to go. What we want to use it for, so. It's due February twentieth, so that'll be.
What purposes of the grant?
This is for. Economic development projects such as constructing or rehabilitating commercial, industrial, or mixed-use structures, and constructing, reconstructing, or repairing roads, accessways, and or other site improvements. Recreation of facility improvements, solid waste disposal products, social service related projects, including daycare centers, elderly centers, domestic violence, and emergency homeless shelter. Multipurpose human resource centers and food distribution facilities. Homeowners initiatives and collaboration with local community development, financial institutions. Redevelopment of historic preservation areas that leverage private funds. Development projects including economic and community development, transportation, environmental protection, public safety, children and families, and social service programs. And land acquisition associated with all the above private. We have any ideas? We'll be talking about it.
You can start working on our aviation food sheds.
Shelters.
There's another outbreak again, the price of eggs now, almost sixty.
Yeah, they're crazy, even at Aldi's where you see, you're like a dollar ninety-nine, like five bucks. I get nine eggs a day now. All right, so next. They have the opioid settlement fund policy, which. I was trying to think of a name for it because I couldn't figure one out, but I think I like opioid settlement fund dispersing policy, because it's actually about like. How, we had to come up with a, we have like twelve, around twelve thousand dollars, thirteen thousand dollars that we. That we have to allocate. So, and the other change I wanted to do on this too, was the purpose of this policy is to establish clear black guidelines and procedures for the Volontown Board of Selectmen to follow when, and then cross out considering requests. For what dispersing, when dispersing opioid settlement funds. Ensuring that funds are allocated in a manner that best addresses the opioid crisis within the community and aligns with the board's goals of public health and safety. So. I think, I thought, I thought I put it on here, but I don't know. The request. They align, I wanted to put in here somewhere that, that. The eligibility for the funding request align with the guidelines presented in exhibit E, I can't figure, what did I just say? The line, the line, really, I can't remember what I just said. They align with exhibit E and the core objective as presented by the. The. The OSAC. That's what we are, that's what we use to see if things align. And all of these reasons align to that. Prevention, treatment, recovery, all this is pulled from those, those two documents.
Your group, what you've submitted to us.
Yeah.
Would that changes or would the changes?
Would the changes, would the changes of mentioning that they align with the, that the, that the.
Well, since you know what you just said, why don't you make the motion in a little second? Because all I got was the dispersing part, everything else.
We refer this policy with a reference put. That the initiative support the guidelines, the following objectives as. As re- as referenced in exhibit E and the core report presented by OSAC.
Sure, okay, so.
Okay. So all in favor? And this just makes it a clearer, clearer policy for. For the public to see what, what we decide on. And for people that want to ask for it with things, with. And then what we added to the agenda, did you get a copy of it? It's the author, it's a resolution authorizing the finance director to define financial paperwork. This came across because when we were signing all the paperwork for the, this switch banks. It was a question who we signed it, is it me or is it Julie, but Julie is the person that knows if the information is correct or not, because it's, it's a lot of the. W nine, the EIA number, they. Bost up the finance director now. For doing. For doing the bank, all the bank statements and everything, they do.
Julie, they, like, I've always been the administrator for the bank account, where the treasurer was the sign on it.
And I don't need to get, and my first electman doesn't need to get all the bank, that, because then it just, it just needs to be like directed to a certain person, so I. They, and not lost in my emails.
The, one of the problems in being in a small town, small town government, one person who resonates with me half.
Yeah.
The.
Segregation of duty, yeah.
Yes, and checks and balances are always probably going to. Um, so, would this be to sign all approved paperwork?
That would be.
Just any paperwork, because maybe, when, when I read it, you know, it says, well, you know, sign contracts, would it be a contract that, that we voted on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or would it be a contract just, you know, the. Do you believe that's coming out myself?
So when the bank says, I need the, I know I'm right, first, and the bank has a resolution that, that's who, who can come to the bank and find it, you know? I can, I can, they, they, we have signature heart.
Yeah.
Um, I'm administrator that says I can sign for that. Somebody tells me that they're doing nine, well, I can sign for that and hand it out.
Because originally I was like, it should be.
Brand or, or any, any contracts we go into, that's always gonna go through.
But um, yeah, because originally I was like, it should be a resolution for the center mill bank paperwork, but then we were like, well, what if we open other finance accounts or something?
Right, like I get requests to get um, cert one thirty four taxes, that form, I get them all the time, if I had to go to the board of spot, I'm there every single time, you know what I mean, like.
Okay.
You couldn't do this strictly just to keep, um. Being able to do this, the basic, you know, the basic, so.
As long as you have a trustworthy person in place for all set, you're always completed.
Well, the finance director, that's the thing, that makes it more, um. Uh, executive, I guess, is that the finance director is a higher position, not a lower electric position, so. He, not to say that electric people aren't that, but it's more. I don't, I don't want to say more trustworthy, we don't know. It's a higher, it's a higher position, so it's, they are stable, I guess, more stable position than, than someone that's only here for a short time or that you don't know is even, um. Knows what they're doing, I guess.
True, okay.
I think that's safer too, but um. If we, if you want to add anything to it, then we can.
Approved would be nice. All agreed?
Yeah.
Because it could be, it's just as simple as, you know, what you said, you need a tax identification number, you just have to sign a W nine. Well, just, that's part of the approved list.
Yeah.
But if it's a contract. Then that wouldn't be approved until it works out in the funding.
Okay, so for this, but for this like, when I approve contract?
Yeah. Did you understand what you just said?
Yeah, no, I know what you mean, yeah. So. I just, I'm looking through with everything.
I'm looking.
Of adding, um, so we added, for the selectmen approved, right before the contact card, number one.
True.
And so, all in favor?
Aye. Let me get, do you want to also put it through the hotline?
Well. Well. It's some stuff I don't approve, unless we have a list of what to approve. Like the W two stuff, like actually have to have someone to approve, will find everything.
Well, would you think that there would just be a standing list? Me do. Okay, fine, just.
Well, I can say for our dislike my approved contracts, purchase orders, invoices. Financial statements and any other necessary financial documents.
Sure.
And that's all, so.
Good enough.
Alright. And.
Um.
Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Second motion here.
Move to the ground.
What is?
Go home and clean the house up.